Good afternoon. Good afternoon and welcome to the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners meeting, February 15th, 2024, and we'll allow everybody to introduce themselves on the dais.
Chrissy Rieschel, Assistant Clerk.
Leslie Hervey, Clerk to the Board.
Stephanie Summer-Dumas, Commissioner.
Good afternoon, I'm County Commissioner Denise Dreehouse.
Jeff Liddo County Administrator, Charlie Anis Prosecutor's Office.
And I'm Hamilton County Commission President Alicia Reese. We start, we always start our session with silent prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, and I just would ask, there's so much violence that is happening around our county, keep everyone in our prayers, and then also the young woman that was murdered yesterday at the Chiefs Parade Celebration, keep them and those who were shot, please also keep them in prayer. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous session.
Second?
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse? Commissioner Summer-Dumas? Yes.
Okay, do we have any public comments? I don't see any cards, so I will open it up for public comments, and if I'm getting mine together, I will open it up Vice President Dreehouse.
Thank you. Couple of things on my list today, I did attend, as I always do, the William Henry Harrison Celebration on his birthday, there is a tomb down on the west side along the river that celebrates President Harrison and his legacy in the community, and so Doug Sammons, the Mayor of North Bend, and Chuck Burkholz, the Mayor of Cleves, hosted a celebration, it's a march and then you go to the tomb, and there were some dignitaries there from the federal government, and so it's always an interesting event, the community participates, they have school kids there, the band plays, so it's very, it feels very small-townish, as some of these communities do, especially on the west side, but very important recognition of some of the history, the important history down in that area of the county, so I was pleased to go and participate in that ceremony. I also went to the NACO Conference in DC over the weekend, it's the National Association of Counties, so I go, and there were other counties, of course, from Ohio there and from all over the country, thousands of county representatives, and so I think the importance of participating in some of these things, while it, you know, it's different conferences offer different things, this conference offered a lot of access to what's happening at the federal government, particularly by way of resources, and so they had a room set up where all the federal agencies were represented, and talked about the nexus between what the county is doing and what the federal government has to offer by way of funding, and so I met with somebody from the Ohio EPA related to stormwater projects, met with somebody from Health and Human Services related to housing projects, met with somebody from the CDC, and so just trying to figure out ways to maximize the partnership with the federal government, because they do have funding available for some of the things we're doing in Hamilton County, it's just a matter of making those connections and drawing down some of those dollars, so I will be following up with staff related to that, but I was, I was really, in a positive way, thinking through some of those partnerships, so I will be bringing things forward in the future. And then lastly, I went up and participated in the One Ohio Meeting, you've heard me speak about this before and how long it's taking to get the money from the settlements down to the communities, our direct allocation has come, and we have allocated that money out, and I think we, better than most counties in Ohio, are turning that money around and making sure people in this community benefit from those settlement dollars. The foundation funding, however, has not rolled out, instead we're still working through a process, but yesterday, they actually released some dates, and so I'm going to give those dates, because this is very positive progress, and so the RFP release will be March 4th, registration opens on March 4th, this is for organizations to get registered by way of licensing, get an EIN number if they intend to apply for some of the grant dollars, and then the application opens, this is the big date, application opens on April 2nd, and then the applications are due a month later, so it's coming, it's been a long time coming, but I think because there are 19 regions, it's been rather complicated for some of the smaller counties in some of these other regions to figure out who's on the lead, how they wanted to do their applications, we in Hamilton County have been, we've been ready for about a year and a half, but we have to wait for the, for everyone to get on the same page, and so there, there has been a delay, but the application will open on April 2nd, so for any organization that is interested in applying for these dollars, that's the date to look for, and you apply through the state portal, so through the One Ohio Portal up at state, those applications come down then to us locally, to vet through our local foundation that all three of us serve on, we will make recommendations, and then the recommendations go back up to the state, so that's how it works, more to come, thank you.
Well, I do want to say, I think all of us are saying, we kept meeting and meeting, we said, when is the money coming, so it's good that they're going to have it down, and Vice President Dreehouse, one of the things that you mentioned, I just wanted to highlight, is that we were more organized, a lot of the other parts were not organized like we were here, and so they had to kind of wait and get the others organized, hopefully we were a model to help some of the other, some of the other counties, so I'm glad to know it's on the way, and you mentioned those dates, is there somewhere they're going to be able to get them on the website here?
They are on the One Ohio website, and it's, I don't know if anybody can pick that up, it's a chart, it's very easy to read and understand, but it's a chart with four dates listed, and that's the chart, we will also be forwarding this information out locally to the providers that we have through the HCR website and the list we have, but the actual information is on the One Ohio website and can be accessed there.
Okay, One Ohio website, and maybe we can have a, some kind of link on ours that will help link you to that one as well, because that's news to me too, by what you said.
Yeah, well, and the local foundation too, obviously plays a part in all of this, and so we have access to the list of participants there, we'll make sure everybody gets it.
Okay, great, Commissioner Dumas?
Thank you, just a few things, I participated, as I always do, on Thursday evening with the White House briefing, nothing really significant that came out, but there's a lot of funding that's being dispersed, and I would just urge everyone to get on grants.gov, and there's funding for, for everything that you can think of, if you're an entrepreneur, if you're, you're wanting to start a business, just get on there and see what's available. In addition, I participated in the Faith and Community Alliance webinar, Bishop Tate is the lead on that, and they were talking about politics and faith, and how it intertwines together, so they meet regularly once a month, and that was my first meeting with them. Also, the One Ohio Recovery Foundation, I heard you on the video, the video kind of went in and out, so they sent us a recap of everything that, that happened, and they're going to try to do better with the audio part, so that was extremely interesting. Had a meeting with Holly and Ralph Lenny as it relates to the Dr. Odell Owens Coroner's Building and the possibility of May the 1st, the first week of May, having everything up on the building, so we can go over there for some sort of ribbon cutting as it relates to that. I also got an email from two young ladies that were at the Xavier Panel, Women in Leadership Panel, and they emailed me, they're working on a project about prison libraries, now I thought that there was already libraries in the prison, but it seems like if you want some books to read, then your significant other or family has to send books into you, and there's a House Bill 2825, the Prison Libraries Act, and they're working on trying to get prison libraries in, in all the prisons, and so I'm going to be working with the reentry department, and also with these two ladies, and have a webinar to talk about how the county may be able to help in that effort. Lastly, I did contact Administrator of Kansas City, who's just like Jeff a little bit, and we had a, we had a little slight bet with him when the Bengals and Kansas City were playing, and so we were able to get ribs from them for the young people, because we did win, the Bengals did win, but I did send an email from the board indicating our condolences as it relates to what happened yesterday. And lastly, I will have just a few comments on By Leave 4, and that will end my comments.
All right, thank you, I want to thank the top ladies of distinction, they had their annual five-star community sweetheart gala, and honored several people, they honored the YMCA Silver Sneakers, I also received an honor for Black History Month as well, Thane from the Zoo received an award, and also those with Kelly Services that provides group home services, so I want to thank them, really enjoyed it. Also, was at the launch of the NAACP Mobile Engagement Unit that's focused on helping people register to vote, helping answer questions, they have, it's really a nice mobile unit, people can go in, they've got the computers, you can check your voter registration, all of those different things, and much needed, particularly now when voter ID law will go into effect in this election, there is a primary election, I'm going to keep saying that date, voting starts on, on February 21st, and the election day is March 19th, and I think every election is important, so I wanted people to know about that one, but this mobile unit will be going around and helping people answer questions, check their voter registration, new voter registrations, and I think it's the first in the country like this for the Cincinnati, for an NAACP unit, and the Cincinnati NAACP launches, so I want to congratulate the Cincinnati NAACP for that launch, it was over at the Holloman Center over at the Urban League on, on Monday, and I believe they're out this Sunday, if I'm not mistaken, at Quinn Chapel Church, so they'll, you can go to their website, find out where it's going to be next. Also, had an opportunity to speak at the Princeton City Schools, the Viking Leading Ladies had a workshop of young ladies, encouraging them with empowerment, and I had a great time with them, I had a wonderful time, and then afterwards, got a chance to speak with the Lady Vikings Varsity Defending State Champions, and they're getting ready to go into the playoff today, so I wished them the best of luck, hopefully my pep talk gave them a little something extra, it's hard to repeat, and when you're a state champion, everybody's after you, so I was excited to talk with them and bring back my old days of basketball, I almost, almost got too excited and thought, wait a minute, give me a uniform and let me come out there, then I remembered that, wait a minute, these knees aren't what they used to be, but I'm excited, we honored them last year here, and I was honored to be invited to speak with them yesterday, so lots of young ladies in leadership out at Princeton High School, they also, we told them about getting involved in county and our internship program, so they will be applying, they've asked for the links to apply, several young ladies were very interested. Also attended the Investment Advisory Committee meeting with the Treasurer's Office yesterday, and wanted to let people know that the 513 Relief Bus will be in Evingston on Friday, be in Evingston on Friday, and excited that we're expanding our services to deal with a lot of the medical, the backside of the bus, I call it a mobile medical clinic, if you will, so excited about those services that will target, it will target hypertension, it would type, it would target glucose, and it would, it would target also cancer, so we're looking at those areas, others will be added, but those are some three big areas that it will expand to this year, and we were very excited, it was very successful, and the launch was very successful last week, and been hearing a lot with great feedback, and got a chance to talk to a lot of people last week when it was at Corinthian Baptist, again, we will be at the Talbot House in Evingston, 10 to 3 on tomorrow, on tomorrow, is tomorrow a Friday? Yes, tomorrow, I'm getting my days mixed up, and then want to announce that the Senior Home Repair Program is now open and relaunched, we put a million dollars in again this year, and you can call the Council on Aging to get help, and their number's 513-743-9000, so you can call them, and they've got home repairs, as well as they do have some assistance for seniors with their Duke Energy Bill, now this is important, everything is going up, property taxes that people are struggling with, going up, even though more people have jobs, but your pay has not gone up, so the property tax gone up, Duke Energy, I'm hearing 50%, some people's bills are 50% increase, it's going up, that's why they had the article that homelessness is out of control right now, it is really hard out here, and so one of the things I'm really focused on right now is trying to figure out what we can scrape together that might be left, might not be left, what we got in our levies, what do we have available to scrape together to still help people, because these are our citizens, we can't just, not enough to say, oh, well, the ARPA money is over and move on, can't move on, middle-class families getting crushed right now, seniors getting crushed right now, so we've got to pull ourselves together in terms of all hands on deck, to try to think as creative as possible, Mr. Ludo, I think next week, hopefully, we had asked to look at, see what other dollars we might have left in ARPA, and I think we're going to have some dollars that we'll be announcing hopefully next week, this board is trying to move as quickly as the administration gets it together, we want to move and vote on it so we can get to the people that might be able to help with some additional dollars, we put 5 million about a couple of years ago, and that money is almost gone, and we're looking to scrape up some other money if we have it, and hopefully next week, we'll be able to vote on some additional funding that can help with this crisis, and I'm going to keep looking and keep pushing, because people are getting crushed, I mean, really, I'm talking to people, they're getting crushed out here with, you know, unexpected bills that are higher than expected, higher than they budgeted, and people say, well, didn't you budget, your check didn't go up just because your bill went up, your check is here, and if your bill go here, they not saying we're going to just move your check up because your bill went up, and this is very important, this is the most important thing on most people's minds, whether you're a homeowner or a renter, whether you, you know, you, you got, one bill that you do bill, people are mad about there, they're saying that, that, that water bill, that sewer part on the bill, that MSD part done went up, and I'm hearing a lot of, I was at church, and they made a church announcement, these bills have gone up, and I was in the back, look, I said, so is mine, but more importantly, my job is to try to help take the pressure off of the citizens, that's what we up here for, that's what we getting paid for, so I'm, I know Jeff might say it in his By Leaves, but I want to make sure everyone knows that we're working hard, try to find and scrape, and my only focus is that really, right now, how do we bring in more money, how do we get more money out to help the people that's getting crushed, I don't know how those bills went up almost 50%, well, we did, we haven't even had a bad winter, can you imagine if we get one of them real bad days, they've been talking, this is the talk of town, that these bills, these gas electric bills went up almost 50%, so wanted to say that hopefully next week, we'll have something, the quickest the administration could get something to us, I'm asking to put it on the calendar so that we can try to vote on it and get it out, and that the folks, the House of Family Services can have it available to help, to help people as much as possible. And then the last day to register, to vote, again, I told you about, they're looking at your ID, so make sure the ID and everything matches, if you got married, you need to, you got to get the new one, just like you got to get me the marriage license, you got to get a new, new one with your voter registration, and last day to do that will be on February the 20th, in order to vote in this, in this primary, so those are the ones that I wanted to bring up, we do have a couple of By Leaves of some appointments, I'd like to go to By Leave Number 1, it's a resolution appointing members to the Hamilton County Hospital Commission, want to thank everybody who has applied to be on these boards, we really appreciate you, on this By Leave 1, we have Craig Young that will represent Children's Hospital, Amar Batit, hope I said it right, representing Christ Hospital, Leroy Lopez representing Mercy Hospital, and Christopher Press representing the public, I'll open it up for comments or questions on By Leave 1.
I just want to thank these individuals for their willingness to serve.
Commissioner? Same thing, I'm just happy that we're filling the vacancies.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve By Leave 1.
Second?
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer-Dumas?
Yes.
By Leave 2 is a resolution appointing a member to the Hamilton County Board of Building Appeals, Jessica Reisenberg, who will be a Labor Representative, I will open it up for any questions or comments.
Thank you to Jessica.
No comments.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve By Leave 2.
Second?
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer-Dumas?
Yes.
Okay, I will now turn it over to Mr. Ludo for your comments and By Leaves.
Thank you, Commissioners, just a comment on the property tax issue, so the administration is working to pull some recommendations together for the board that would include some resources that we have that we could either redirect or supplement, we'll provide that, I'll try to get a report to the board either before the end of the week or sometime before the close of the long weekend that we have coming up, in time for consideration at one of the meetings next week, where we can talk about it, the board can then consider where you want to go on it, we'll try to pull it together in such a way that there'll be something ready for By Leave consideration next week as well, just so, as you said, Commissioner Reese, we can expedite something for the public as well.
Thank you.
So, we'll get that to the board very shortly, do have a couple of By Leave items on, By Leave Number 3 in your packet, Commissioners, this is a resolution authorizing the purchase of cyber insurance, this is our annual insurance policy for cybersecurity insurance, it's coming By Leave, just because we have, the procurement process for this has concluded, and we want to get the, the policy renewed so that we do not have any lapse in coverage, this was Cincinnati Insurance Company, it's for $130,189, the premium is up slightly over last year, however, most of that is due to the fact that most of these premiums are based on the, the size of the, of the county's budget, so as our budget has increased, so has the premium, so the administration recommends approval, happy to answer any questions, I know that Frank Spataro, our HR Director and Enduro Risk Manager, is here if there are any questions.
Okay, open it up, any questions, Vice President Drew?
No questions.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve By Leave 3. Did you second it?
I'm going to have to stand in front of the votes, I prefer not to second.
Okay.
Second? Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer-Dumas?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners, By Leave Number 4 in your packet is a resolution authorizing the administrator to negotiate and enter into funding agreements for the large tourism event grants, these are grants that we do, we've started doing every year to promote large economically impactful events in our community that are by and large a part of the community's fabric, and promote economic development, the room night occupancy in, in the county that spurs our transient occupancy tax, et cetera, so every year we do have an, a, a application process that is put into place this year, I believe we have, we have four recommendations this year, I'm going to ask that Holly Christman come forward and walk us through each of the recommendations, and we can, then if there's any questions from the board.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for the introduction, as Administrator Ludo mentioned, we did open up grant applications much earlier this year at the board's request, given the number of events that happened in the spring and early summer, so we are recommending four events for funding, we did receive more than the 1.25 million that the board authorized in the 2024 general fund budget, so we did, as the internal committee here, had to do some reductions in order to maximize the number of events that we are able or recommended for funding this year. So, just going through who is fun, recommended for funding, we have Cincinnati USA Regional Chamber Foundation for Blink, I think we're all familiar with that event and the large economic draw it brings to downtown Cincinnati, they requested 750,000, our recommendation is 300,000, this will be the second time that Blink has received this grant if the board chooses to move forward with this recommendation. The second grant we're recommending is Forbes Media for Forbes Under 30 Summit, which is the first time this will take place in Cincinnati, this will take place in October, again, primarily at the banks, if you're not familiar with this event, the Forbes Under 30 Summit, which is presented by Jobs Ohio, brings the world's top leaders, founders, and creatives together in one city for four days of immersive experiences, and again, this year, this national event will take place October 6th through the 9th, so we'll have a lot of folks coming in from out of town, they can get a really good flavor of all the things we have to offer in Cincinnati, and we're looking at roughly 5,000 hotel room nights, so a big impact to our downtown businesses, not just hotels, but also all of our restaurants and bars and nightlife that we have here. Again, this is the first time, they'll be here, their application was based on the economic impact that happened in Cleveland last year, we are recommending, like I said, 300,000, they requested 750,000. The third one that we are recommending funding for is the Flying Pig Marathon, we're recommending them at 100,000, they did request 785,000, this will be the second year that we are recommending funding for Flying Pig, last year they received, I believe it was 400,000. Again, this event, which is hosted May 3rd through 5th, provides, obviously, I think we all know, a world-class marathon experience right here in our backyard, bringing thousands of event participants, both locally but also nationally into our downtown and downtown neighborhoods. And the final one that we are recommending this year is the Santangelo Group for the Cincinnati Music Fest, which will take place at the end of July at the Riverfront, and they, we are recommending 550,000, they requested 860,000, this will be the third time we are recommending funding for the Cincinnati Music Fest, last year they received 750,000. So, all three events, all four events recommended were reviewed by an internal selection committee, again, we looked at it based on the criteria primarily of economic impact, and also any benefits to the county as well, so with that, I know there are some folks here who may be able to answer any specific questions, but happy to take your questions now.
I'm going to open it up for questions, Vice President Dreehouse.
Thank you for the presentation, you know, as you said, the reason that we initiated this a couple of years ago, actually in a budget process, was to participate in some of these really large events in the county that bring people into our community and provide economic benefit, primarily through the room nights, sales tax, you know, some of the other things where we benefit from these huge projects, we had not been doing that prior to that, I had the idea, as I said, probably three years ago, I think it was, thinking that the county could participate to help expand the programs that were already going on and bring more people in, that was the whole idea behind it, as we look through this list, am I right that the Forbes event is a one-time event?
Correct.
For Hamilton County, okay, I think in the future, just for my own benefit, it would be helpful to see a chart to help us track, you know, we, we've put a little bit less into this fund this year, not by much, but by a little bit, so it's, I think it was a little bit harder to disperse the funds because we had a little less to work with, but I think it would be helpful, at least for me, to see where the money has gone in the, how much we allocated, and where that money's gone in the past, so we can kind of frame that up, instead of just looking at one year at a time, so just, just for future, and I, I apologize for not asking for that earlier, but I'm happy to support this, I think all four of these events, Blink, the Forbes Event, which is new to the list, the Flying Pig, and the Music Festival are all really the Flying Pig, and the Music Festival are all really important to the region. We're all familiar because we've all experienced these and we know the other people that go to these things year after year. So I'm just glad that the county is once again stepping up and helping fund some of these events that bring in big crowds, that provide, provide a lot of activity in our community, a lot of vitality, and never mind the revenue that comes to the county. So thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. Commissioner Dumas?
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. I will support by leave four. We have already placed it in our budget. I just wanted to make a couple of comments. So this 1.2 million is coming out of our general fund. And for me, the general fund is essentially to provide services to our community, our constituents, our people of Hamilton County. All of these are entertainment, entertainment venues, and they will supply a economic impact for sure. But I think they will do just fine if we stop undergirding them. This is the third year that we'll be doing this. They have been in existence for quite a while without us. And when you talk about general fund, I look at the reserves in our general fund. This is not impacting our reserves right now. But I would, when it comes up again for our budget, I would hope that I am not going to support it because we were really wanting to help them out through the pandemic and to try to get people, to unify people and bring them all together again, and we've done that. And I just think three years is, is good enough and they can continue on. May lose a little bit of the economic impact, but we can use these monies as 1.25 in other places. But I will support by leave four. That's all I have.
Thank you. I will definitely support this. Tourism is economic development, and I know that you were going through some of these really fast, but I wanted to highlight that there was a time when we were the only game in town, Cincinnati. A lot of people didn't challenge us, but we do have competition now. They, we are having competition from our partners in Louisville. They're building facilities. They are having concerts. We're seeing concerts bypassing us and not even coming to Cincinnati. We got a lot, but there's a lot that's passing us. And it was great, we did have Taylor Swift, and that was wonderful, but we need them wanting to come all the time. Beyonce didn't come here. Usher's not coming here now. So many others are, the WWE that I'm trying to get to come to our facility, they're looking at Cleveland Stadium and not our stadium. And so we have to be competitive. It's no longer, oh, we've got our festival and nobody's going to challenge us. They're coming at us. And other counties and government entities, they're investing in these. But we got to look at numbers. We can't just assume that it's going to stay here. We have a, we have a stadium that has, we have maybe one concert, but the only consistent concert we got is the Music Festival. I think they've had 34 events in our stadium. Our stadium sitting empty. If they were to leave, we ain't got but one concert, maybe if that, or no concert. And then they brought in last year 9.6 million dollars in revenue for hotels. Now, if we just took a percentage of that, if we said, we're going to allow, what percentage you bring in that we reinvested into your event, we would be putting more than that because they brought in 9.6 million dollars in hotel. They were to go away, that wouldn't be coming in. This helps Hamilton County. The other thing is their economic impact outside of that, and Julie Calvert is here from the Convention Visitors Bureau, who I guess was on, I believe was on this committee, 107 million dollars all the time. Not one time, not one concert, not one year, but all the time because we want repeat business. So if they were to have to compete now, which they do, in Louisville, who now is having their concerts, they're trying to come out the same type of concerts we're having, but they got financial support in Louisville from their government and everything to take out, wipe out Cincinnati. And they're, they're getting the habit of it because these concerts are, are not coming to us. Tennessee's getting ready to get a brand-new stadium, and they're going to do a dome. There's this indoor, you think they going indoor just to have a football game? They're going to be coming after us with more concerts. And so that cuts out Cincinnati. And so I just think if somebody's bringing in 9.6 million, I would be willing to put a percentage and say, whatever they bring in, they get a percentage that goes back. Because we do that for all these other, we're putting money in other entities already, sports, et cetera. We're putting in sports teams, et cetera. We're not getting anything back. So I just wanted to highlight the economic impact. I know the Flying Pig has an economic impact. And Forbes, I appreciate Forbes. Forbes is a one-time deal. I'm more for a repeat deal. So what I'd like to get out of Forbes is that we need to get some articles. If they're going to be at Andrew Brady, and you got, we got the, the county's Black Music Walk of Fame that has technology, we got the one-of-a-kind outdoor augmented reality technology, according to Trivium and the technology people. There should be a story about that. We were doing technology. We're not talking about we're going to do technology. And if they're going to be next door and they're right here, I think it would be valuable to us because I know they went to Cleveland, they had a crowd. They're going to Columbus, they got a crowd. When they come here, they're going to have not just a crowd, but also all this technology that we've got going on because they bring all this music and so forth. And I just think that could be a good hit for, for Hamilton County as well as having all the people that come to town and showcasing. So I'm happy to support, support this, and I don't know, I can't predict the budget of the future. But if you're bringing in 9.6 million dollars, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be against putting a little bit to the side for this. Because if you're bringing in, I'm willing to give you something as long as I know you're going to bring in money to the, to the county. It's a win. It's a win-win for the county. And all of these things, not to mention the media that we get, there's a cost on that. So I'm sure when we get done, we'll have a report, what we got from media-wise, what we got, we were in billboard, we were in this. How much would that cost us if we had to advertise? And that helps us make people say, man, I think I want to come to Hamilton County. I want to live here. I want to bring my next event here. So I appreciate it. I know it was less money than we had to work with this year, but I think these are good investments and I'm happy to support this. With that, I would ask, I'll make a motion to approve by leave four.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming. Let's go to the calendar. Oh, no. Did you have something? Is there another one? Is that it?
There is not.
Okay, now we're going to the calendar, and we've got Mr. Engineer.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Three items today. All three have no cost involved in them. Item number one is a resolution for a joint agreement with the City of Cincinnati for improvements on Hillside Avenue. The county has a project there. We've got grant funding for, it goes, the work goes up to the city corp line. The city would like to add some work to the project in the amount of 50,000, or $250,000. That will be fully funded by the City of Cincinnati, and we will add it into our contract. And that contract will come to you at a later date. But this is the, the joint agreement with the city to be able to do that. Item number two is a resolution. Basically, the county engineers report to the board on the right-of-way request, vacation request for Pink Voss Lane, which is a township road. The board received this request back in November for review. We've notified the petitioner of the requirements. This is eligible for vacation. So if the petitioner would like to have it vacated, we've informed him of the rules and he would need to file that with the board. Item number three is a resolution for a joint agreement with Anderson Township to allow the township to install rectangular rapid flashing beacons at various crosswalks in Anderson Township. Anderson Township would be responsible for 100% of the cost of installation, operation, repair, maintenance, and replacement of the flashing beacons. No cost involved in any of these to the county.
Okay, I want to open it up.
That makes it easy for us, Mr. Engineer. Thank you for the report out. Just out of curiosity, what is a flashing beacon?
It's, it's a flashing warning sign at a crosswalk to notify motorists that somebody may be crossing. You'd have a push button, they push the button, and you'd have flashing lights to warn vehicles that there's pedestrians crossing the road.
Do we have these in other parts of the county?
We have some in Sims Township. They've done some, I believe Colrain Township's done some. They've all been provided by the townships. They, they provide them as part of their path program.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Dumas?
Well, that's a good question. I'm thinking about North College Hill. Do they have anything like this?
I'm not aware of any in North College Hill. But it's, it's a good, it's a good use for pedestrian crosswalks.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. I have a motion to approve and accept for the record, item one, two, three.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ludo, we got the consent agenda.
The consent agenda, I'll walk through this fairly quickly. It's a fairly short agenda. Item number four on your agenda are bid awards and contracts executed by the Purchasing Department. This includes items such as canopy repairs at Paycor Stadium through our normal capital repair budget, IT services at Public Health, vegetation control and the county engineer, permit technician services and planning and development, and electrical contract services at the Justice Center. Item number five is a resolution purchasing two 2023 Dodge Durangos as replacements in the sheriff's office for $74,840. Item number six is a resolution purchasing one Ford Transit as a replacement in the sheriff's office for $32,075. Item number seven is a resolution authorizing one Dodge Durango for the Emergency Management Agency at $42,265. Item number eight is a purchase, resolution accepting one purchase order for $800,000. This is for voucher, this is vouchers for children's services, families with Meyer Store. Item, we have items nine through 14. These are all, these happen to all be first renewal contracts for foster care agreements in Job and Family Services. I'm just going to read the name of the organization and the amount since they're really all the same thing. We have Agape for Youth, 1.1 million, Choices, which, which is Children Have Options and Caring Environments, Inc. for 1.326 million. We have Osterland Service, Osterland Services for $428,965. Presley Ridge at $303,381. SJO Kids Doing Business New Path for 4.915 million, and Village Network at $335,000. Then, commissioners, we have one, we have the travel requests, item number 15. This is a request for the trout, for travel at the county's expense of one employee in the coroner's office to Birmingham, Alabama, and one cor, one employee in the coroner's office to Las Vegas, Nevada. That is your, that is your consent agenda, commissioners. I recommend approval. If you have any questions, happy to answer.
Okay. I'll open it up. Any questions, Vice President Dreehouse?
No questions.
Commissioner Dumas?
No questions.
Okay, I make a motion to approve and accept for the record, items four through 15.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
I make...
Before we go into...
Yes.
I have one more announcement that I was unable to make at the top of the meeting, but I can make now. I have an intern in my office. She started like two hours ago, which is why I couldn't announce her earlier. Her name is Amari Davis. She's from Xavier. So welcome to the county. We're delighted to have you and look forward to working with you, and welcome to the meeting.
Welcome, welcome.
Is that a result of our panels when we were at Xavier?
No.
Okay.
No, but that's a great idea.
Okay.
Anything else?
I don't have anything.
Okay. All right. I make a motion that we go into executive sessions, Section 12122G2 to discuss the acquisition of property, and Section 12122G2 to discuss the acquisition of property.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.